Calling to order the Lake Mills City Council for August 6, 2019. Would you please do the roll call?
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Buckholz?
Here.
Would everyone join us in doing the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item four, corrections and/or approval of the city council minutes of July 16, 2019. Does someone want to make a motion to approve?
I move the city council minutes of July 16, 2019.
Second.
Are there any additions, corrections, changes? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, anybody want to share with us your correspondence?
I did receive one. Need to ask me to bring up that there's a recycling event at Jefferson County at the Fairgrounds, Gate 2, on Saturday, August 24th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. It's for recycling electronics. It's open to everybody in Jefferson County, residents, farmers, and businesses, so opportunity to recycle all your electronics that you don't need anymore.
What's that date?
August 24th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon.
Not a big window.
And if you're recycling TVs or computer monitors, they're going to charge you for it.
Yeah, I think there's a small fee.
But that's true all the time.
Yep.
Even if you call it to be picked up, you still have a charge on TVs and monitors.
There's a number of things besides electronics, too, that they accept. Probably their website will have it on there.
Okay. Anybody else have any communications?
No, just a lot of talk about the, or speculations about the color of the water tower.
(laughing)
It was kind of interesting. The people were saying if this is all we have to complain about, then we've got a good life here, so.
Yeah, well, at least we don't have the problems some other people have where their water's coming out brown.
Yeah, we had a little bit of that last week, but...
But was that from construction?
It was, yeah.
Yeah, well, that happens when you open the things. I do want to mention that Carol Burrows has been keeping us in the loop with the senior center, and we appreciate her work and her minutes and everything that she does to make that a viable entity at this time, so. Thank you, Carol. All right, any other correspondence? I had other correspondence, but it was all having to do with road construction, and our trusty staff has handled it all, so I don't have anything to bring to the council.
Yep, that's all I had also.
And our liaison people are working out well, too, from what I've talked to people, so. Okay. That means we can move to item six, questions and public comment. Let me have my trusty sheet here. Okay. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked, oh, I read the wrong one. If your, sorry about that. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium before you leave the podium. Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Come on up to the podium, there's no order, special order.
Hello, my name's Ryan Grady. I am, I guess, petitioning or trying to become part of the planning commission, and so I just want to introduce myself and say hello and let you know a little bit about myself. I'm from Racine, Wisconsin, born and raised, went to University of Wisconsin-Madison, got my bachelor's in business, and I went back and got my master's in education administration. I've been educated for 15 years now in various capacities as a teacher, and now I work for a scholarship organization where we provide about 700 college scholarships and provide professional coaching, life coaching, academic coaching along the way for them as well, and so that's what I do. So, I look forward, hopefully, to getting to know all of you over the next few weeks.
And would you fill out the sheet that's there, please?
Got it.
Okay, well, we appreciate you coming to the meeting so we can meet you, and we appreciate your interest in the city, and we're glad that you took a look at our website and so forth.
We've been here for a month and a half, so, but I've always been really looking forward to moving to a place and then having both feet down and being involved, so appreciate the opportunity.
Good, excellent. All righty. Anyone else wish to address the council in the public hearing section? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing section and move to the city manager's report, number seven. All yours, Steve.
Attached to the agenda were the check registers.
Uh-huh.
You've got a couple of months' worth of check registers, a lot of fun reading.
Well, we appreciate you presenting those for our perusal. Thank you.
I guess the only question I had is, we don't have starting balance and ending balance, and I don't ever remember seeing them on those before. Should we put those on there for us to see, or is it something that changes?
That won't show up in that report.
Right.
You've got to look at the budget report. So, yeah, that'll, hopefully, we'll be kicking a number of those out here shortly.
Anybody have questions?
Technically, we don't have a beginning and an ending balance.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of...
Yeah, so it's, you're looking at budget comparisons across the line item, so that's why we wait for the budget report, tells you if we're over or under.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and at the end of the year, check tells us if we have an ending balance or not.
Let's hope we do.
Yeah, I think we did.
Yeah.
Some, Main Street's really starting to wind down. Have the one lane down to Keys. They're supposed to be pouring the second lane Thursday. They plan on closing Lake Park Place Monday and having it open again on the 19th of August. And then they're really going to start ramping up south and getting out down Woodland Beach Road, probably about the 19th, around there. A1 will have a crew that'll come back and finish the water and sewer between Woodland Beach Road and, and water sewer and stormwater and the base between Woodland Beach Road and Pinnacle. So, you'll notice, you'll notice several traffic changes coming up in the next couple of weeks. First, the one when East Lake Park, or Lake Park Place is blocked off altogether. Portions of the street down there, their only way out will be up the northbound lane or out the south end where there's no concrete, depending on which side of the street you're on. So, it'll, pay attention and watch if you have to ask, because there's going to be times where it's going to be a little bit confusing to start with, and then just about the time you get used to it, they'll change it back.
How far are they going before they leave town?
The pavement will end at Woodland Beach Road. The concrete, the water and sewer and stormwater will go all the way to Pinnacle, and then they'll put temporary asphalt on, and then they'll come back in the spring, and then that's kind of the jump-off point. You have water and sewer that can take off from Pinnacle, and then the pavement will essentially run from Woodland Beach to Pinnacle in that initial phase, and then when it gets south of Pinnacle, then we'll see what happens. That's a little bit more of a difficult process because there are no alternate routes.
Yeah, that's true.
So, they have to get, they have to try and figure out how to keep traffic moving through, so that may, that will be something. We had an original plan where it was, they were going to create a temporary road to the east side. They decided not to do that. I don't know what they're going to do now, so we're working on that.
Creative road building.
Having good signage is going to be key, too, because a home football game's starting a little over two weeks. I think Lake Mills has the first one on a Thursday night coming up in two weeks.
Ours are still at campus.
Yes, at Old Shield.
So, getting to campus shouldn't be too bad.
There'll be people coming in on that south end there that will, they'll end up detouring Pinnacle and going all the way around to get there.
Lakeside will have a problem, too, because you have people coming.
I think you have a Thursday night game and a Friday night game the same week, other kickoff games, in two weeks from Thursday.
Maybe we'll have to ask the police department to help a little with that, you know, traffic.
Schools have been providing a lot of information, so.
There'll be more of the away teams just trying to figure out how to get here.
There's no way you can provide adequate signage for...
Oh, no, 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 no.
Because it's just, I know that I've...
Not for one thing.
I've had to deal with people who say, "Well, where's the detour route? You know, where are the ordnance signs for detour route?" And I said, "Well, the official detour route is 94 to 26 to 89," or 18 to 89. Locally, it's a local access route, but it's not made as a detour route, so it doesn't have the same type of signage. To a certain extent, you've got to be paying attention and kind of take some guidance on where you're planning to go in the city. See a lot of people ending up down at the end of Main Street, turning around and coming back. But, you know, there's road closed ahead signs and there, you know, turn here signs, but you're not really paying attention to it when the road in front of you is kind of open, and you've already gone through three sets of barricades that say detour ahead.
Well, and you can turn right on Phillips Lane.
Yes, and you can turn right on Phillips Lane.
So, for Lakeside, they can...
So, the locals, a lot of the locals, they're going to do that anyways. They're not going to take Lake Street Ferry, so.
Right, right, and if somebody from out of town goes down there, you know, if they hook a right, they should end up where they're supposed to be. It'll be interesting to see what some of the computers tell people as far as where to go.
GPSes.
We might find some people in the lake, you never know. So, well, let's hope not. Okay, good point, though. Thanks for bringing that up. Let's see, what else do you have for us, Steve?
Mulberry Street, they're continuing to move forward. They're pretty close to having the water and sewer done. A lot of unusual water and sewer conditions on Mulberry Street. A lot of the water main and sewer main are built the way it was said it was built, which isn't unusual for something that old, but...
Well, I have a question. South of Fargo, you know, in the block south of our house, it looks like they're going into every house quite a ways across the sidewalk with the utility. Is that because that's where the hookup is? Wow.
Curb stop is at the property line, so they have to excavate beyond that to be able to get in the curb stop and make the connection. So, generally, that's why they take a five-foot TLE, a Temporary Limited Adhesment, so that they can dig back far enough into the property line to do that.
Okay, okay.
A couple of times, you know, the, there was one property, well, several properties where the sewer actually ran across a neighbor's property, so you can't do that anymore, so you have to try and figure out where the sewer line is and dig far enough back in on that property to find the connection, and so they're, you know, you had conditions where the water service is under the concrete pavement at the house, and they want to bring it out, straight out of the house, not under the concrete, but their existing service would be there, so you have to dig another trench, and I don't know if you noticed, but there's an abandoned gas main.
Yeah.
Live gas main, a six-pack of conduit, so there's electric, fiber optic, telephone, cable.
Is that in the tree lawn?
Yes, and then you get across to where you can make the connection, so there is a lot of slow digging going on, and they've done their fair share of hooking.
Oh, yeah, they've been very busy.
Yeah, so that's not uncommon, that's pretty common on all city projects, because we put, ours goes right to the property line, because our code says that our portion runs to the property line, and then from there, it's the homeowner's responsibility. Some cities actually make the homeowner responsible all the way to the main, but we don't do that, because we don't like them digging in the public right-of-way, because they tend not to take care of the street like we would like to see it taken care of.
It's safer, too.
Yes, we actually know when they're digging in the right-of-way.
Well, yeah, and...
Sometimes we show up and they're digging in the right-of-way.
Or they might think they're digging for one thing, and they might be ending up hitting the gas line or something, which would not be good for anybody.
Was there anything else that has cropped up that, because of the age of the road, that...
Multiple water mains.
Boy, we really have a lot of water in this city under the road.
Yeah, it looks like maybe the Fargos had run water to their house before the city ran water down the street, and so there was a small water main on the east side of the street that nobody knew about, and then there was a regular water main on the west side of the street. All the connecting streets, sanitary sewer are really shallow, so the running down the street, we kept it as deep as we could, and then you have all these side sewers coming that are really shallow, we didn't anticipate. We thought they would be at the same depth as all the other ones, so now you have to create a bunch of drop manholes. So, those were kind of connections. They had a, the sewer running down Oak Street, while it flows to Lake Street down Oak, it actually tied into the top of the manhole on Mulberry so that it could be jetted and cleaned. That wasn't anticipated, so you, we had to add another manhole, so we could separate those two sewer lines and keep an area where we could actually clean the sanitary sewer on Oak, and what we want to do with the long line is make all that sewer deep as we can make it, and so, you know, you design everything so that you can eventually come back and connect it so that it's at the proper depth. So, those are, those are kinds of things. Of course, the water, the groundwater has been incredible, even in the dry weather. It's just flowing like wild, so, a lot of lead.
We ever run into no water, we'll look under Mulberry Street for water, might find it.
There's a lot of lead services, even though they're not, they didn't show up in houses, what they did was they cut them off at the floor line and pigtail them out with copper, so when you're digging out in the street, and all of a sudden you go, "Nope, nope, that house does have lead."
Oh, no.
So, we found a number of those.
Not what you want to find.
No, so it, it's an old street, it's, I think that and main are probably the two oldest ones, so everything we did down the street was obviously an experiment in finding out what they were thinking about in the 19, in the early 1900s, pre-1905.
So, in other words, 50 years from now, when they have to redo the street or whenever in the future, they'll be able to say, "We were thinking ahead now at this time."
Yes, they will be able to do that. You obviously always have to start with the elevation that you have, so when you tie into Madison Street, that's the elevation you're going to start at, or in your case, at Fargo Street. But you do everything from there to make it as advanced as you can make it, so when they, when they dig into, in 50 years, and they replace the street, that sanitary sewer main should have another, and water, well, water will probably have to come out, but the sanitary sewer should probably have another 25 to 30 years of life in it. The big, the big entertainment at that time will be, there's so much abandoned infrastructure in that street that they'll be trying to figure out what they're digging out all day long.
Really?
They'll be digging out old water mains, and, because you abandon, we're now abandoning two old water mains, and there's an old sanitary sewer, and there's abandoned gas lines and abandoned telephone lines, and...
Will there be a map that will show the abandoned on it when we're done?
There will be for ours, but probably not for the other ones.
What do you mean? Ours versus what?
Well, ours is water and sewer.
Oh, the city stuff, okay.
With the gas and the telephone and all that.
Well, we won't worry about gas and telephone, they can take care of it, but the water and...
The fire department likes us to worry about the gas.
Yeah, 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 I agree, for that reason.
The gas company generally has a pretty good idea where their abandoned ones are, and they can work with us on that one.
Did we find any gas lines we didn't know about in the process?
You know, I don't know. I know on Mulberry Street, that one was, not Mulberry, on Main Street, that one was old enough it was still asbestos, so they had to have a environmental company come in and actually do the removal, so they actually removed that gas main, and then they had to dispose of it in the proper form and fashion.
Wow.
It didn't, it looked like the, the one on main was an old steel, so it was even older before they were using asbestos, I guess, so.
Good for us, all right.
Yeah, so, I guess it's six and one half dozen of the other. It's all going to be there.
Well, I suppose you take any city as old as ours, you're going to have those problems.
Yeah, when we did from Lake Street to Madison Street, we paid the extra money to have them remove the old city infrastructure, the water main and the sewer, because it was, there was just too much in there, so we paid for that, and I assume now on these two streets, when you come back and redo them, there'll be so much in there that you'll have to tear some of it out as you lay the new, because you want to leave the existing in there, so you have to find a place to put the new. Well, that's going to go where the stuff was the last time you abandoned it, so you're going to be...
And maybe they'll have some new technology by that time that will make things easier than they are today, too, so we'll see. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
It sounds like staff and yourself have been very busy, right?
Phase one on the archaeological for Sandy Beach is done, and we've moved to phase two.
Do we know anything from phase one?
Yeah.
Did we learn anything?
Yes.
Is it good news or bad news?
There are balls.
In the middle, huh?
Well, enough to push us to a phase two. The mound, there's nothing in the mound.
Okay. The mound is just a mound of ground.
Yes.
Well, there we go.
Where the sand volleyball courts are, were a lot of pieces of archaeological significance.
So, we put the, never told, no.
In other words, like arrowheads, pottery shards?
Yes, so it was wondered if, we're, phase two is now going to determine if that was hauled in or if that was actually a spot where they camped, so that's where...
Well, it really was the Indians playing volleyball back then.
Could have been.
Yeah, you know, they really liked that game.
I figured it more likely that they liked the flat spot next to the beach.
Yeah, I suspect you're right.
The Mill Pond Weather Vane should be going in in the next two weeks. Send it out to be repainted, but they have a spot, and they've been working on that. All five of the buildings at the Mangan Development are full.
Really? Boy, did that go fast.
We are into the final month of our lead service lateral reporting requirements, so by the end of August, we're supposed to be finished. I think we have like 30 left, we think. We're waiting for our radium plan to be approved, because we're, the water tower should be done pretty soon, probably in the next week and a half, and then we'd like to get moving on fix-it well number four.
Okay, what is the color of the water tower going to be?
It's a gray with a, it's a kind of a blue-gray on the bottom, and on the top, it's going to be a kind of a white-gray, and, okay, I need to be careful, the lettering is, the lettering that we picked...
Right.
It's going to say Lake Mills.
Okay.
And Lake Mills is 40 feet across on two sides, so it's got facing east and west.
Good.
And the Lake Mills looks blue, but the name of the paint is Purple Haze.
Ah-ha, that's where the, that's where this purple thing is coming from.
Yeah, we...
But it looks blue, and even though it's called Purple something Haze, okay.
Yeah, the, the engineer spent a lot of time today trying to explain it and telling us where to go look at it to see what color it looked like, because he said it's called Purple Haze, but it looks blue.
The hue is, got a blue base, probably.
He says it'll stand off on that, that white-gray really nice, so...
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, so they're, they'll be wrapping that up pretty quickly. We filed the Riverwood Platte today, phase six of Brookstone. That construction is pretty close to done, and we'll just wait for the asphalt.
What about American Way? I hear, I think I still hear a bunch of trucks down there.
Yes, they, they kind of use American Way to run up and down to haul dirt back and forth for balancing on the lots on Rosewood and Oakbrook, so, and they like running up and down it, because it packs the road tighter, and hopefully you get a better base, so...
Is American Way open now to the public like me?
No.
Okay, when do you anticipate that happening? Just roughly.
I don't have a clue.
Oh, okay.
It's all done except for the pavement.
Yeah, okay.
American Way and CP Avenue, and Rosewood and Oak, Oakbrook will be done, probably in another week, all except for the asphalt, and then they're going to jump over to, what is it, Honeysuckle? One of those roads up in that area, and I, I have to believe that the asphalt paver is hoping that he could come in and do it all in one shot.
What company is that?
Paint and Dolan.
Oh, okay.
No, 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 I take that back.
Okay.
It's Tri-County.
Oh, okay.
It's, Paint, Tri-County's doing that one. Paint and Dolan is doing Mulberry, and Wolf is doing South Main, as far as any asphalt paving they have to do, so, and then Wolf does ours this year, so it's kind of like the concrete companies. They all, three had different concrete companies, Schultz and Renhak and Lalande, and then ours is Swigard, so it's, got a lot of contractors that I've got to keep track of. We have our site plan for the 26-acre sale to Horizon, so they've moved forward, we got all our permits, everything went through, even the fees paid for the credits.
Wait, okay. Wait, okay. Where is that going? Where's Horizon going in?
To the east of JMEC along American Way.
Okay, right on American, okay, gotcha.
And there's an event in the park this weekend called Music in the Park, put on by a bunch of young people from the high school here, bands. So I think there are three local bands that are gonna be playing in the park this weekend, I think Saturday.
Friday.
Friday.
Is this a battle of the bands or something like that?
I don't think so. I think they're just...
Playing.
Playing.
Is Otto one of them? Does anybody know if Otto's playing?
Yes, I think Otto's one of them. Otto, Grigus.
Grigus, yep.
And the other one is Everett.
Carlin.
Carlin. And I think the other one might be Jake.
I don't think so.
Don't think so?
No.
Okay.
I'm not sure who else is in it, then.
Yeah, there were three of them, I know that.
Sorry, we can't give publicity to the third one due to the fact we don't know who they are off the top of our head. Not intentional, just didn't know.
And we met today with a company that's looking at purchasing 105 Industrial Drive to bring in a new company. And we'll probably have quite a bit of conversation about that, because they've asked us to provide them with some assistance. TID is out at that location, so it'll be a general fund request. So that'll be coming forward.
Yeah, that sort of brings up a couple of questions I had. I know that preliminary numbers were out on the first of August for equalization and TID and, and the, what was the other one? The net new...
Construction.
Yeah, net new construction. Looking at those numbers, it looked like, at least from what I saw, we had like, we were on the positive side, twenty-eight million in equalization. And then there was just over seven million in growth, new growth in the last year. The one thing that I thought was kinda interesting is, I only saw two of the TID districts that actually had positive increment. Do you expect any changes in that before the final comes out?
No. Net new construction went from, from five sixty-five, or not, net total assessed value, went from five sixty-five to six hundred thousand. So that was, it was more than twenty-eight thousand. It might've been twenty-eight thousand in just real estate and then some other personal property things. The TIDS took a beating because of personal property exemptions. So, you know, like the feed mill down there had a lot of equipment that became exempt, and so we get it through the backside, through estates. They give us a replacement for the personal property that we lost. We get about thirty, forty percent of what we would've gotten from the state to replace it, but, so we dumped the money from that into the TID, but it's still not, doesn't make up for what we lost. So, yeah, those, those two TIDS will start from a negative, but they, they don't have any debt right now, so you have to structure from that point.
Oh, that makes sense. I just thought it was kinda funny looking through the thing with Jefferson County, the two highest ones, I think, for net new growth were City and Town of Lake Mills, from what I saw.
If you're doing it by total value...
Total value, yeah.
Ford, Atkins, and Watertown were the top two. If you're doing it by a percentage of growth, it was Johnson Creek and Exonia. But we did all right. We were at one point two-six, which isn't bad for net new construction, which is, like you said, about seven million dollars. So it comes in at a decent. I know the census people keep calling back and saying, "How many new houses did you add? Are you sure?" Yeah, that was pretty good. I'm anticipating to see a better jump next year, but...
I think it sets us up pretty well.
For a couple of years.
Yep.
We're, you know, now we're in the debate about, you know, we need an extra police officer, and we need more time from our zoning building inspector, and we need right down the line. So any money you bring in that you thought was gonna keep you even is now gone.
But we are growing.
We are growing. Better than...
Not crazy growth that we can't maintain.
Right.
That's all I had. I just wanted to ask that question.
Do you have anything else?
No, unless you have any questions.
Seeing none. Thank you for your presentation, and we'll go on from there. Item eight, acceptance of minutes of the Board of Review of May twenty-second to, is that supposed to be eighteen?
Yes.
Okay. I forgot to double check on that. Board of Review from, oh, because of their Board of Review, that's why. Board of Review of May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, Board, Parks Board of June two thousand nineteen, nineteen of two thousand nineteen, and the Library Board of June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. They will be placed on file, and we'll continue with item nine, Council Business. Tonight, we do have an appointment. We, I would like to appoint Ryan Grady to the Planning Commission. If you were watching the program, you met, met him on the pub, the...
Public comment.
Public comment, yes, thank you. And we appreciate his offer to serve in that capacity, and I'd like to have someone make a motion to approve him.
I'll make a motion to approve Ryan's appointment to the Plan Commission.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. Would you call the roll?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay. Miscellaneous licenses, would you read those for us when you have a chance?
These are all tavern operators' licenses for Rachel Canoy, Amy Wheat, Hope Let Go, Patience Olson, Mackenzie Shade, Taylor Rainey, Elizabeth Godkin, Marie Nicolay, and Katie Dusterbeck.
Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to make a motion to approve those tavern operator licenses?
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll when you're ready.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero.
Okay, thank you. And that takes us to item C, Resolution nineteen forty-one. Would you read that, please, for us?
Resolution nineteen dash forty-one, in appreciation of public service to the City of Lake Mills from Kirk Redner.
Could you read the whole thing, please?
Whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills desires to recognize and honor Kirk Redner for his years of loyal service to the City of Lake Mills and its citizens, and Kirk Redner has served, excuse me, Kirk Redner has served the Light and Water Utility of the city with a desire to provide the highest level of service through his valuable talents and expertise for the past thirty-four years. And Kirk Redner has devoted numerous hours to provide positive contributions to the operations of the Street Department, while exhibiting the loyalty and dedication of the city and enthusiasm for his profession. And Kirk Redner's attention to detail, professionalism, and effectiveness have made a meaningful and lasting contribution to the City of Lake Mills. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby recognize the dedicated public service and career of Kirk Redner, and extends best wishes for an enjoyable retirement.
Okay, thirty-four years. That's a long time. Any comments that you'd like to make?
Kirk is obviously one of the senior employees at the Street Department and the city. I think he's the third one that's retired this year.
Yeah. They're just falling like slides.
So they've obviously had a significant changeover and coming, and we've appreciated all the work that he's done. He's been the primary operator, so a lot of times you'd see him in the back hall when we were working, or one of his favorite chores was sweeping streets. So Kirk has a nice pastime. I think he runs a tavern.
What municipality is that in?
Pardon?
Where is that located?
You know, I don't even know. I...
Gosh, I can't go buy a beer if, I don't know where the tavern is.
You know, and the funny part about it is, I know they just won one of those Brewer Tavern of the Night from the Brewers, so he got forty tickets to the bullpen.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. But I didn't, I didn't pay attention to the name of the tavern.
Now, has he gotten his plat yet?
It's right here. It's right here. He's, he's not here this evening, so it'll get delivered to us.
So we'll get that to him. Could we accompany that with a copy of the resolution?
Yep, it always goes with.
Okay, good, excellent. So thank you for doing that. We need to make a motion. Would someone like to make a motion to approve this resolution?
So, go ahead.
I'll move adoption of resolution, yeah, nineteen forty-one.
Second.
Any further conversation about this resolution?
Just like to offer my congratulations, and hope he has a wonderful retirement. I've enjoyed mine.
Yeah, the city has certainly benefited from having somebody who's been that dependable and takes a lot of knowledge with him. So I hope he doesn't mind a phone call once in a while, saying, "Kirk, what do we do now?" So, but anyway, well, thanks for all your service to the city. Call the roll, please. Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero.
Okay. Moving on to item D, we have a presentation on the financial statements for two thousand eighteen by Hawkins-CPA, which is, can you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Chuck Krieger. I'm the city manager with Hawkins-Ash CPAs, and I've been the in charge on your municipal audit for a fair number of years. I have thirty-three years in in my position in my firm. I'm not quite to Ms. Reedner's standards, but I'm...
Quite up to thirty-four yet.
Yeah.
But if you hang in there a while, you'll make it.
Tonight, I will spend just a few minutes going over the financial statement. The one I'm gonna look at is the shorter one. It's called the summary financial report. I understand you have it all on your, on your iPad.
Also, I want to mention for the people at home, that if you have a computer, you can follow along, because it is on the website. And so if you're an analytic and you like this kinda stuff, please look it up and you can follow right along with us. So you said the first thing you're gonna do is the...
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna cover the, the shorter version of the financials. So the summary financials, there's a couple items, starting on page two. If you go back just one more page yet, I always like to mention about the auditor's report, because really, the auditor's report, that's, that's our contribution to this. You pay us to audit your books, and then we give a report on what we found. Mentioned it's independent right at the top, so we, we have no ties to your, your city, other than we're doing an audit for you. It's a summary financial report. The, the full financial has a complete independent auditor's report, but in essence, it says that these financial statements are materially correct in all major, I guess, parts, and they're done in accordance with government accounting standards. Okay, that's the standard that we have to adhere to when we do an audit. It's got a little bit on management responsibility. You know, the financial statements really are the responsibility of the management. We are auditing your financial statements, okay? We don't, we don't do the work. We, we help prepare them, but it's really your numbers that we're looking at. Then our auditor's responsibility is to give the opinion, and the last item is the opinion. And you got what's called a clean opinion, unqualified. It's the best report you can get, okay? And it's, the clean opinion is really on the full set of financials, the thicker version that you have. The summary references that. So again, best opinion you can get. So if we flip the page to page three, this shows the combined balance sheets of the, of the city. And when we throw this all together, it includes activities of the utility and the city, and all the small funds of the cities, including the TID districts and that type of thing. So just some items to note, at the top, cash investments, very similar from year to year. I know it's kinda small, but the cash investments varied only a couple hundred thousand between last year and this year. Some of that is affected by how you collect your property taxes in, in December. Some of it's also affected by, if you have, let's say, bond proceeds that aren't spent at the end of the year. Then the taxes receivable, the next little section, again, taxes receivable between last year and this year, virtually unchanged. The one right under that, though, the accounts and other receivable, you'll see it went from about one point six down to about a million dollars. Biggest change there was last year, you may recall, there was a ongoing project to refurbish and repair the dam, okay? And much of that cost was reimbursed by the state. Now, that project went over two to three years, I believe. So at the end of seventeen, you had a large receivable, probably around five or six hundred thousand dollars that the state owed you money for, okay? You received that money in eighteen, which in essence brought that receivable down and would've moved it from receivable up to cash during the year. Other items are very comparable. You know, you have your loan receivable, that's, you've got a revolving loan out there, and the company that has that loan is making their scheduled payments, just as they're supposed to, so there's no, no issues there. You're paying on time and every month. Excuse me. Other than that, there's fixed assets listed in there. I will call your attention to some of the stuff regarding, which shows Wisconsin Retirement System net pension, just before the total assets line, and then there's some Wisconsin Retirement System pension deferred outflows. As I mentioned, the last couple of years, it's a relatively new disclosure for municipalities. Wisconsin Retirement System is a, is a massive retirement plan. And given that there's some new, relatively new accounting standards for governments, each municipality that participates in that, including school districts and cities and towns and villages, they have to recognize their little portion of the assets of the, of the retirement system. Now, this year, you have an asset, which means the actuaries determine, okay, Wisconsin Retirement System's gonna owe, I don't know, two billion dollars from now until everybody retires. The assets that they have to back that up is more than the two billion, okay? So they have more than fully funded their retirement obligation at this point. Now, given the fluctuations in the stock market and other securities markets, that could change from year to year. And in nineteen, in two thousand seventeen, there was a liability, which means they were underfunded. At the end of eighteen, I believe they were probably around a hundred and two percent funded, which is, which is excellent if you compare Wisconsin Retirement System to... to almost any other retirement system in the States, in the United States. I venture to say if you went south to Illinois, you wouldn't be anything close to that. If you went out to California, you may be at seventy-some percent. So Wisconsin Retirement System, good retirement system. It's well-funded. It's well-managed. And I think retirees can have some confidence that it's going to be able to pay its obligations as they come due, based on where it is at this point. Liability section, like the bottom half of the statement, not too much to mention there other than, you know, accounts payable kind of ebbs and flows with when you pay your last check run and maybe what you might have for expenses related to construction, okay? That kind of, sometimes that's weather-related, so you might have a little more or less from year to year. The long-term obligations, your general long-term obligations increased in eighteen as did ones for the utilities. Based on, you know, Steve's discussion on the various street projects, obviously, that's where your money is going when you borrow it for the city. A lot of it is going for street repairs and replacements, okay? The utility seems to always have ongoing projects, and a lot of it is related to the activities when you replace a street. Getting rid of multiple sewers and having one sewer line or multiple water lines. I mean, that's all, some of that is borrowed by the city and some of it is borrowed by the utility. And then at the bottom is your equity position. Again, the equity went up about a million dollars. That's typically due from a fixed asset perspective. You had some fixed assets. Now, if we want to look at the graph next door and the associated page four, this is the breakdown of your revenues. This is a pie chart to give you some idea where it comes from, the bulk of your revenues. As you can see, the public charges for services, you know, it's fifty-two percent. That's eleven million dollars. Again, I had mentioned earlier, this is the utility and the city operations together. So that eleven million principally, that's your water, sewer, and electric revenues. If you look at the taxes and special assessments, you know, that's around five million. That did not change a whole lot from year to year. And frankly, the revenue that you recognized in eighteen compared to seventeen for the entire operations of the city and the utility is only about a million dollars difference. And again, the prior year had that dam receivable. That wasn't swelling. That was in reference to the dam. And so there was some substantial revenue recognized in seventeen that did not show up in the eighteen numbers. You had some areas that did have increases, though. Developer contributions, state transportation, water and sewer revenue all had some increases. So if we flip the page, the next one shows the, if you go to the graph for expenditure, the pie chart, I'm sorry, for expenditures, and then the related numbers are on page five. Again, your biggest area is public works. Well, public works includes the utility operations. So obviously, if you had the most revenue in the utilities, you're going to have the most expense in the public works area. They were fairly level from year to year. Overall, maybe only a couple hundred thousand dollar difference in totals from one year to the next. There were some decreases in capital outlay, some increase, offset some increases in water and electric expenditures. And the community and economic development, you know, if you go through the numbers, you're going to see some changes in that. That was principally the activity for Main Street, okay? There was property activity in that area. So now, when we get to the end, we're talking the next graph. It's a linear graph. Shows you equity position, okay? Now, remember, some of this is, I would say, maybe a little skewed because if you have bond proceeds that you had that went into your reserves that you haven't spent yet, that's going to show up as an increase next year. Principally, it would show some sort of decrease as it comes back to where it should be. Again, so that's why there's some of the choppiness there in the general fund. The summary of those fund balances is on page six, if you want to look at the numbers portion of it. Really, I think the chart does a pretty good job of kind of showing you what happens over time. And then just a couple of items, the last page of your summary report, page seven, just some other financial information. We talked about the assets you added and the long-term debt and equity. We do issue some other reports as part of our audit. We reference the independent auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance, okay? There were no compliance issues that you have. The internal control on financial reporting, and I think in the past, sometimes you've asked about that. There usually is a finding in there, and there was one this year, from a ability to prepare GAAP basis accounting-related financial statements. So the people that do your monthly bookkeeping do a fine job with that kind of stuff, but when it comes to putting together a financial, that seventy-some-page document, the thicker one that we have, that's why you pay us to kind of put that together. We do numerous villages, towns, and cities, so getting our knowledge base to where we can prepare that spreads the cost over a number of entities where if you, if Betsy had the inclination to learn this, you would be investing substantial resources to get her up to speed on that, and it's a one-to-one sort of, she can spread that knowledge to other entities and defer the cost. Us, on the other hand, we have numerous clients that if it costs me a thousand dollars to keep current on it and ten clients, it's really only a hundred dollars per client. So it generally makes more sense, particularly in relatively small communities, to have the auditor prepare the financial statements. Obviously, your staff approves those, reviews the numbers, makes sure that they just look good. And that's what we've done for many years. We've prepared the financials, and they've been approved by the management of the city.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yep, any questions?
You know, and I always say it goes pretty quick, so if you think of something afterwards, certainly.
You use the term "looks good." What do you mean by that?
Well, it's, the numbers are what we audit. We adjust the numbers as we see appropriate if there was nothing that. When they look at it, they say, okay, yes, based on what we gave you and what adjustments you've given us, it looks like they're in the right slots, okay? The right seats on the bus, if you will, okay? And some of it is aesthetics. When I say "looks good," okay, it goes together properly, okay? And we check that from our office also. If there's a number in a footnote in the back of the large statement that has to agree with the number that shows in the balance sheet or something up in front.
So what I hear you saying is that your job is to take and look at the figures that are provided by the city. Make sure that they, you've got all the information. You fit it in, but you don't do the analysis and say, well, you're weak here or you're strong.
Well, we certainly give suggestions, okay? And Betsy certainly is free to, and she does call and email with questions if she said, okay, what do you think on this, that, or something else? So we give our opinion, okay? She can either take it or doesn't have to. And I'm sure she does the same with, you know, your city attorney and with Steve and your financial bonding people, okay? But yes, we take the, we take the numbers. We make sure they're in order, if you will. And it doesn't mean we don't adjust them sometimes. We certainly do. And I guess I would be remiss in mentioning, not mentioning that, you know, this last year, there was a little, some difficulty from an audit perspective because your city bookkeeper kind of left when we came down in January, and she was gone by the time we came back in March, okay? So even though she was only here a year, there was some knowledge that walked out the door from the day-to-day stuff. And Betsy and Teresa did a great job kind of picking up the pieces and getting questions resolved that they did not have the prior city bookkeeper to provide answers.
There are other things, though, that you're going to. I don't know if you think about them a lot, but I do. And I know Betsy knows that I think about these a lot. But there are classifications when you're generally looking at an audit that you wouldn't necessarily see in your budget document or any of the accounting documents we have. So, and I'm looking for the one, but you know, it's like general administration. What is general administration? And what is the finance and the culture and recreation? And who gets divided up into what categories? And so it's, when you're looking at our budget and you're looking at it and it says city manager and council, do you think about which category that falls into? Well, I do. Chuck does. Our bookkeepers really don't. They look at the account numbers. They look at what line item it is, and they assign it. And then Chuck and Betsy and I kind of go through and clean it up and make sure that when it gets into the audit, it falls into the right categories. So if you looked at the budget document at the top, it does say where it's supposed to, what line item it's supposed to fall in, if it's culture and recreation or conservation and development or general administration or public works or police or fire. It goes through and spells out that, but you'll notice like general administration. But then you have planning and zoning under the city manager, but that's really part of development, conservation and development, I think. And so you're dividing my budget up into different areas. And then how much time do I get assigned to what categories? And it's never as clean as it looks on any of the reports. Certain amount of checking the numbers really closely and seeing why it got moved to another area or should it be there or not. With this new budget package, we've got, we have a very, I would say, a primitive accounting system. So there are a lot of categories in my budget that are, there's more detail to. But when it actually gets dumped into a line item, it's just kind of supplies, even though I have it in the budget as asphalt and gravel. And so, you know, those are the kind of categories. And then Chuck divides them up differently because the audit has a different expectation.
Right, and I guess I would also mention, okay, when you see the audited financials, there's, from a, I guess, space and practical standpoint, you know, we could add a lot more detail, but I don't know that from a presentation or your understanding that does any more than Steve's budget statements that you work at off of on a monthly basis.
Right.
Yeah, for the audit purpose, the audit is done to pull the total numbers together and do a comparison and then put it out for the state and the bondholders and Betsy and I, Chuck. But if you were looking at it from the level of a department head and you wanted to know how much money you had available for a certain item, or someone was looking at it and saying, you know, we expected you to buy, do so much in this pothole patching. You're going to have to buy a certain amount of cold patch. Well, if I don't know that there's any, if there's no line item for cold patch, do I know that they've been doing any cold patch? Or how much they've spent? Because, you know, they're telling me, well, I can't afford to buy cold patch. Well, why not? Well, that line item is all spent out. What else is in that line item? Could be thirty different things. So those are the kinds of divisions that I work on, that Betsy works on, and then Chuck works on. He really does a condensed one. And so you look at it, and you're looking at the utilities and the general fund and all the other funds combined in this one page, everything. I wouldn't work on that document at all on a daily basis. Provides, in fact, you know, total assets, how much water main and sewer main are in the streets and what their value is. My only question is, is when do I replace them?
Right, right.
So the depreciation may give me a little bit of an idea, but it's not like saying, okay, when I look at the depreciation one and it tells me it's out fifty years, okay, now I got a better idea.
And, you know, back to Mr. Fritch's question about, you know, input and opinion and stuff. Betsy will contact me, I know frequently is really the right word, but as needed, if she's got a question, okay, we've got this maybe oddball revenue, oddball, what she considers kind of an oddball expense of some sort. Where do you think it fits? And she'll give me a description of, okay, this is what I'm thinking. What do you think of that? Does that make sense from the chart of accounts that the State Department of Revenue recommends, okay? And as I said, I will give an opinion. She can take it or not, but it's always. I always appreciate when the clients contact me during the year, and I encourage that as opposed to they do something and then at the end of the year, I come in in January, and let's say there's an error of some sort, it may be too late to fix it because it's after December thirty-first, okay? So I much prefer they contact me before or as it's happening. You know, I mean, particularly because we can be proactive then as to maybe avoiding some sort of negative consequence.
Steve, I'd like to go back to you. You made a comment, and I'm not sure I'm quoting you exactly, but you said something to the effect that we've got kind of a simple accounting system?
Well, I said primitive.
Primitive, that's it, primitive accounting. Is it really adequate for the city, is my question? Or do we need to take and update it or what?
Do I think we need to update it? Yes. Been talking about it now for seventeen years.
And we haven't done it.
But we've been waiting for this to happen and that to happen. Betsy had it on her timeline for last year, then Mary got, became ill. We had to bring in Judy, so that set it back another year, then Judy left. Now we have Kathy, but now we're back another year. So while we've been looking at it, I actually have set up the chart of accounts to work out with the way I budget and the state requirements for that. It may change now because of the new budget system we're under and how they do that type of paperwork. But would I say that we need to upgrade? Yeah.
So in other words, I wouldn't be wrong in saying we're muddling through right now?
I'm not quite sure. I would say it's a muddling through.
Yeah, we've been on the system.
From my perspective, it's, could it be improved? Certainly, okay? Is it obsolete? Not at this point. Not at this point. But there is, you know, there's always improvements that could be made from a reporting standpoint, costing systems, and what have you. I mean, I've got some smaller municipalities, villages of comparable size, one has a chart of accounts of 500 numbers, and the other one has a chart of accounts of 100. Okay? Part of it comes back to what kind of level of control do they want, and what's important. Now, you have a, you know, a full-time city manager, and you have full-time employees here. Villages tend to have part-time people, so they depend on the council or the village board a little more from a control standpoint. As Steve mentioned, he spends considerable time thinking about classification issues and budget issues, as does Betsy. So, you know, they're, I guess, well-versed in doing things, and if they, you know, at some point say, "Yeah, I think we do need to pull the trigger on this and come up with something that suits our needs a little more," that would be their call, certainly.
So, Steve, is it a network system where you have the database sitting on a server, and the clients are connecting into it? Or is it just a standalone system that's installed on multiple computers using whatever on the back end?
We're in with WPPI.
Okay.
So, I don't know. All our stuff is backed up.
So it's nothing that, we're not maintaining like a database server here with this information on it?
No. And to a certain extent, that's what kind of makes it a little bit more difficult is because for a certain period of time, when you make that transfer, you're going to run the old system and the new system. And then Chuck's really going to be upset because you've got the new system, and there's no good way to match it up to the old system. So whenever he's doing that audit for a while, there's going to be comparison problems.
Yeah, you're living in two worlds at the same time.
Well, the hope would be to have some sort of crosswalk. This translates to this and the new, but, you know, that's, cross that bridge when we get there.
So would you look at something like a cloud system, or would you still stay with some other entity out there that has something? What do you think you'd recommend?
We're going to stay with WPPI because they keep us isolated and backed up. I don't have any problem with that, though. We've worked with them, and they'll provide us an option for running them side by side for a while. It's just that it doubles the amount of work for a while.
Yeah.
And so if you have new bookkeepers, they're already struggling to figure out what's going on, so they don't have the time to be able to put into doing that. And you can't bring someone in to help because our system is different enough that you spend your first 12 months learning.
Well, it sounds to me like you've spent many moments pondering all of this, and...
Years.
Well, that's, moments add up to years. And unfortunately, we did, you know, lose Mary and...
And Jim.
Yeah, I mean, we've had turnover that we had no control of, and... But it sounds like, from what you're saying, is that they know what they're doing, it's just that it's time-consuming. You've got the two different systems, and just let us know when it's time to do something. I mean, we won't know. You're going to have to tell us.
You'll notice.
Okay.
Because your budget reports will look different.
Okay, all right. Otherwise, it sounds like we're in good shape. You didn't see any red flags or anything that people watching us at home have to go, "Oh, my gosh." So we're doing...
No, not from my perspective, no.
So, and we got a good rating on our bonds when we went out to get those. That doesn't happen without good budgeting. Anybody have something else they'd like to add, ask, or say? And this is just the report, so we need to move to the next item to make a motion. Well, thank you for giving your evening up.
Yep, thank you.
And all the other moments. So, okay. Then that takes us to Resolution 1942, if you would read that, please.
Resolution 19-42, resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, accepting the comprehensive annual financial report as presented by the external audit firm.
I'm still getting there. So, is there anyone who would like to make a motion on Resolution 1942?
I move adoption of Resolution 1942.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this item? We've already discussed somewhat, but if you have more, that's what we're here for. Anybody have any more questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. And thank you, staff, for a job well done, and all the moments it took you guys to give them what they needed, so. Okay, moving on to item F. Resolution 1943, would you please read that for us?
Resolution 19-43, authorizing the city manager to sign a privilege and street agreement for an awning to be placed at the front of the building at 132 East Lake Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Okay. And you do have a copy of the application from Tyler, and I believe you are here tonight. If we have any questions? Is there a motion?
I move 19-43.
Second.
I heard this one first. My right ear is better than my left. Sorry about that. Okay, mic cut to second. So, we have a motion and a second. What is the wish of the council? Do you have any questions? Do you want Tyler to come up to speak, or are you happy with what you saw in the packet? Looked good to you?
Yeah. Just one clarification that sticks out over the sidewalk. And how high is it above the sidewalk?
We don't have too many people that are 10 feet tall in town. I think we'll be okay.
The requirement is 10 feet.
Is that the requirement? Well, there you go. It will be red? Oh, I love red. That's my favorite color, so that's good. Very pretty, by the way. Anybody else have questions about the awning? As long as it meets with the criteria, I don't see anything wrong. Let's call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. Thank you for adding to our downtown beauty. Appreciate that. And any recommendations for future agendas at this point? I don't have anything personal. Okay. And I guess, meeting is adjourned.